Let us begin. My name is Frank Drake. I am vice president of East Cabarrus Historical Society on the Hill. We are sponsoring our second candidates forum. We are glad that you have come today to hear from the candidates. We are grateful for the assistance of the Honorable Judge Nate News of the Cabarrus District Court, who will be moderating the candidates today. Also, it would be in the assistance of Deputy Lieutenant Yulmar, who today will ensure us today to exercise the highest degree of support. Today's program will be conducted on the same format as we did in our prior program. If you were attending there, it was now a year or two years ago. Number one, the museum's program, the purpose of the museum, is to preserve and present the history of the eastern portion of Cabarrus County. And we consider again the process to be history-making. That is why we are here and why we are doing this. If you remember our program from last term, number one, the museum endorses no candidate, contributes to no candidates, takes no position on any question or on any matter. We do however vigorously encourage everyone, please come out and vote. Vote as you please, but please vote. The more direct way to say it is, if you don't vote, don't complain. And since I intend to complain vigorously, I will vote. In order to try to advance as great a degree of dispassion and detachment as possible, I will even tell you that although I have the M.C. to the program, I myself registered to vote in a completely different county. So I have no dog in the fight at all if your locals lose. That take me back. I take taxes here. I get no stayoffs. The purpose of the museum is to provide you an opportunity to hear from the candidates. Please understand that we are going to conduct this as we did last time. This is a pageant more than any town hall. You will have an opportunity to hear from the candidates, not the other way around. The candidates have each been presented with three prepared questions. All of them will have an opportunity initially to introduce themselves to you briefly in a couple of moments' minutes, and then each in turn will have an opportunity to address each of the three questions in turn. Judge News will act as moderator. As a district court judge, he is well-versed in handling difficult circumstances and hard questions. We have intended the questions to be as challenging as possible with the benefit of the candidates and for you as well, so that you can understand their positions on what we believe to be relevant topics for today. At the end of the program, we will adjourn. This will likely take something of the nature of a couple of hours if we live with our free allowance. Each candidate has much as about three minutes apiece, since there are, as I believe, eight candidates and three questions. If any of you wish to engage the candidates and report our stage in a spirit to do that, will be afterwards outside. We welcome any of you and all of you, please come and see us on March 2nd, which I believe is our opening day for the season, along the hill. The museum will be open, and I advise you will not only be free banjo music, but free hot dogs as well. So come and see us, and please participate. The lifeblood of our museum is participation as well as attendance. And if it matters to you, admission is still free. Come see us. Come see your own history. Now, without further ado, I'll turn the floor over to the Honorable Judge News and sit down.
Well, thank you all so much for attending. I think this will be a very insightful way to get to know all the candidates. Before we begin with the question portion, this will be an opportunity for the candidates to introduce themselves to you. So each candidate will have approximately two minutes to tell us all about themselves. We'll just go from Mr. Helms all the way to Mr. Plot. Then with the question portions, we'll go backwards and then start in the middle and go around. So just kind of anticipate that. So, Mr. Helms, we've got a timekeeper here that will show you, going to keep you there on task, all right? So, Mr. Helms, you have the floor.
Well, my name is Ray Helms. I wanted to let you know the main reason I'm running for county commissioner is not for status symbol. I've got a too-busy of a lifestyle for that. But I gotta live in this county hopefully for another 20, 30 years. So does my children. So I've spent over two years looking at everything that's been going on in this county, what's been done to bring solutions to the problems that they were facing 13 years ago. We're repeating the same problems in 2010, 2014, same thing. They're just bigger now. But they had answers back then, and the answer is wasn't a solution. So I had to start looking at solutions that we can actually implement. You've got legalities that's involved. You've got a lot of things that's involved. It's not just one person making a decision. You've got to look at how it affects the whole part of the county, because some decisions can affect more and benefit more than others in less in some areas. You've got to try to balance it out. So I began to look at solutions, and solutions don't happen overnight. And the main thing with solutions is you've got to maintain them after you start working on them. It's not something you just put in and then you decide, well, we're going to something else. You've got to continue working on that. If you don't, problems creep right back in, and disaster will begin to manifest itself in a way that makes it very difficult. If we don't start fixing some of our problems and coming up with solutions, they're going to be so big that a lot of people are going to be affected in a way they'll never get out of. So Ray Helms for county commissioner. Thank you.
So Mr. Drake was introducing this event. He said there's going to be banjo music and hot dogs at the next event. I was actually told they were going to be here today, so. But seriously, everybody, it's very nice to be here. My name's Jack Lambert. I'm a candidate for Cabarrus County Commissioner in the Republican primary. I'm a small business owner here in Cabarrus County. I'm partner and co-owner of my family's industrial recycling center in Concord. Makes me the only candidate in this race with experience in the heavy industrial side of business. Additionally, I'm the only second chance employer in this race, meaning we hire people who have in previous history had serious criminal offenses. We hire them and give them a second chance to re-enter the workforce. I say that pretty much every debate I'm in because it's something I'm proud of and something I think should be done more on a larger basis. Addition to my small business ownership, I'm very active in the community. Public service has been a cornerstone in my life for as long as I can remember. I'm currently a board member of the Historic Cabarrus Association, as well as Cabarrus Area Crime Stoppers. Additionally, I previously served as a 4-H Club advisor. I'm an active patron and volunteer of organizations like Cooperative Christian Ministries and Operation Decisive Victory, which is a local veterans' help organization. So public service is something I've been centered on for a very, very long time. I think this race is going to boil down to some very key issues of which we're going to discuss later on in this forum, but I'd ask you tonight for the permission not just to have your vote, but to be able to earn your vote come election day on March 5th. Thank you very much.
So I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. My name is Laura Blackwell-Lindsey. I've been a resident of Cabarrus County for 24 years. I have three children ranging in age from 19 to 15 years old. I have served on the Board of Education for the last five years, most recently being re-elected again this past November. When I ran for office, I wanted to be the voice that was missing on the school board. Being a mother with children currently enrolled in the school system was something we didn't have. Now, that is also a missing voice on the county commission. I plan to bring that voice along with multiple other things that are missing on this current commission. I want prayer back. Chairman Morris instituted a moment of something at the beginning of each meeting. I want to have local pastors come and open in prayer in the name of Jesus Christ before the meeting starts. I want a county that doesn't sell out to China. We need a clear policy that specifically states that we will not sell land or give tax incentives to the Chinese. The commissioners fully endorsed giving tax incentives to the land and land to the Chinese Furniture Company back in 2020, and to this day, that land sits dormant. I reject the idea that growth is inevitable. With the cooperation of our Republicans in Raleigh, we can put smart policies in place regarding zoning to help mitigate the growth. We all have received our property revows in the mail. We see the cost of growth and inflation impacting our residents. I will be the same voice for your constitutional freedoms that I have been for you on the school board, and I ask for your vote for Laura Blackwell-Lindsey for county commissioner.
I'm Steve Morris. I have been serving on the Board of Commissioners since 2012, so I'm entering my 12th year. I have served as chairman of the board for the past 10 years. I am a native of Cabarrus County. I've lived here my entire life, graduated from A.L. Brown High School. Both of my children are graduates of Concord High School, so they've been through the Cabarrus County school system. One of the primary focuses for me when I initially ran for county commissioner in 2012 was economic development and improving job opportunities and tax base here in Cabarrus County. I think it's important that we provide opportunities for our young people to be able to stay in our community and earn a good wage and want to continue to be here. That also keeps our grandchildren closer to us, too, so I think that's a big plus. It is great to see such a good turnout here today. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience. Thank you to East Cabarrus for sponsoring this event. Actually, I think this is the third one. He said second, but I recall being at the museum in 2020. But it's a great organization. History and historic preservation are also passions of mine, so I encourage all of you to take advantage of the opportunities that they offer here. Thank you.
Great day, everyone. My name is Ingrid Nurse, and I am running for Cabarrus County Commissioner. I am born and raised in Cabarrus County, and Cabarrus County has a near and dear place in my heart. We have grown together, and I've seen the community transform itself into ways that are for the better. Cabarrus County is at a pivotal moment. At this time, we need to see strong leadership and diversity. Our community needs affordable housing, safe communities and schools, accountability at its highest level, helping elders age with dignity. Did you know over half a million new affordable homes are needed in North Carolina? Our infrastructure isn't properly allocated to address the housing crisis. We need to house the homeless population back into society. Cabarrus County has a rapidly aging population. I will work to ensure our community is safe, inclusive, and accessible place for their wiser years and for the caregivers. Education. I believe in the value of public education. I am a product of public education. I will advocate for equality, fairness for everyone involved in the school system. Economic development. I believe in transformative power of small businesses where residents can start and grow their businesses here in ideas. Lastly, a vote for Ingrid Nurse is to remember, I will show up. I will work to ensure all residents are going to prosper in Cabarrus County. Vote, Ingrid Nurse.
I can't see the timer, so you just have to tell me. I'm Larry Cutman. I'm a Presbyterian minister in the Evangelical Presbyterian Church. Last church I served was Ridgecrest Presbyterian down in Stanley County, and I was there for 14 years and a couple of months. Left there at the end of March last year. They're going to retire me on my birthday because I'm going to be 70, and I'm trying to see if I can do something about that. But anyway, I served for 11 years and two months in the North Carolina House, and a lot of lies were told about me through all that time, and the same people with all the money are telling those lies again. And so that's okay. Jesus told us if we served Him, we'd be lied about and hated, and that's been the story of my life. I'm a person who's committed to the people, to their rights and their well-being first. In fact, when I was in seminary, I made the decision I was not going necessarily to look for a big church. I was going to be a small church pastor. I decided that before I was ever ordained, because somebody has to care about those little churches. Somebody has to care about those people. That's the kind of person I am. So I never desired to have a big church because I wanted to be close to the people and able to serve them better. That's the approach I took in Raleigh, it's the approach I take now. You know, my opponents at every level have always had a lot more money than I did. My first election, I actually won. It was after I was appointed to the House in 2011. 2012, you know, no telling how much money, I don't remember how much money my opponent had in the primary. I had $8,300, and you know, the state race, that's not a lot of money, but I won by 2%. Same person ran against me in 2020. I won 63% of the primary that time, even though I was vastly outnumbered, because the people knew I stood for them. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brent Plot, and my family has lived in Cabarrus County for over five generations. After graduating from Mount Pleasant in 1984, I went to Catalpa College where I played football and participated in the ROTC program. Upon graduation, I was commissioned as a United States Army Field Artillery Officer and spent the next four years on active duty. Upon leaving active duty, I joined the Charlotte Mecklerburg Police Department, worked there for 26 years until retirement. I worked street patrol my entire career. In addition, I spent 21 years on the CNPD SWAT team and 22 years as a field training officer, training rookies when they came out of the academy. Upon retirement, I began a role as a volunteer strength and conditioning and football coach at Mount Pleasant High School under then-head coach Mike Johns, a role I continue today under head coach Daniel Crosby. In addition, a little over two years ago, I opened up Tiger Gym here in Mount Pleasant, and the business continues to grow. People like me have stayed out of politics for too long. It's time for us to have a seat at the table. I embarked on this journey because I want to have a voice, and I want to be the voice for the God-fearing, hard-working people of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, so the three questions that you have basically boiled down to this. How much money are you going to take, and what are you going to do with it? That's just the bottom line. So the first question is, and we'll start with you, Mr. Plot, and then we'll go all the way back to Mr. Helms. Higher property valuations can mean higher tax revenues and more services to citizens, but a higher cost of living. Which do you prioritize, a lower tax rate or fewer services?
I'll give you a very simple, succinct answer. Lower tax rate. I own several properties in Cabarrus County, primary residence, condo my daughter lives in, and a few rental properties. So I have a dog in that fight. And I understand government creates nothing. It can only take from the taxpayer at the threat of fines and incarceration. That is your money. That is my money. The government at every level needs to be a good steward of your money and with my money. Having said that, you have a limited resource, but not one's unlimited. Cabarrus County is a fairly wealthy county. I'm a graduate of United States Army Ranger School, Class 7, Dash 91. One of our daily things we do, we call it patrol base activities. The priorities, number one priority was always security, and way down the list was always challenge sleep. That's just the way it was, because security is what kept you alive. So when you're prioritizing with a county or any budget, with this county budget, public safety will always be number one, because that affects everyone. And you can make the argument, there's some things down the chain, arts and science, parks and rec, that even the schools, not everybody uses. Public safety affects everyone. So if you're prioritizing that list, you've got a chunk of money to spend. Number one priority is this, public safety. That includes police, fire, and medic in addition to law enforcement. And then you work down the list. And when you get down to those things, at the bottom of the priority of the list, so those things are either cut, I should say cut, the prices are either, the expenditures are either cut or the programs are cut. You have to be able to make tough decisions and have difficult conversations. And I can assure you, in my lifetime, I've made tough decisions and I've had difficult conversations. So having said that, I don't mind having those. When I moved my gym from the old location to new location, I had a bigger space. So I put out some feelers to my members. I said, what's some equipment you'd like to have? Just give me some ideas. So I got lists, I got, so I, what I took, I took that list and prioritized. Okay, everybody wants this, I have this much money to spend. So you work down that list. And it's no different in government. Now granted, this is a simplistic example, but it's the same in the theory of, I have X number of dollars to spend, I have a list of priorities, and you go down there, when the money's gone, and the things at the bottom of the list, there's not enough money for them. Government's no different. Thank you.
Very good. All right. And looking at this first question, first thing I thought of was John Kennedy. Democrat, okay. But even John Kennedy understood that lower tax rates actually provide for more revenue because they allow for greater general prosperity. That's the principle I believe in. It's a principle I stood up for for 11 years in Raleigh. I was always trying to get the tax rates down. In fact, we have, we did lower the income tax rates in North Carolina, always, always pushing to eliminate income taxes. We didn't quite get there. There's still some that want to, I was one of the party effort to try to do that. And I served on the General Government Subcommittee of the Approbations Committee of the North Carolina House the whole time I was there. I've seen how to do a budget. I've been part of it. Of course, I, you know, doing that as a pastor and as a member of the Presbyterian for years, you know, I've been ordained to be 41 years next month, so I've seen a lot of that. But I did that in Raleigh and worked on that, and I'll tell you one thing, have you ever looked up the county budget online? That's a mess. My wife pulled it down for me, and I couldn't make heads or tails out of it. What we need is a transparent line item budget, so that you can go through and look up what you need to find, and it's plain and it's date right there because it's a line item budget. That's the way it ought to be done. And to, as far as lowering the taxes, I think they have to be lowered while going through that budget and cutting out any wasteful, inappropriate spending. Government at every level these days does things that's none of the government's responsibility. We need to get rid of that and have government stick to what it is supposed to do and do nothing else. And you could lower the taxes quite a bit by doing that. And I'm going to make trouble right now by saying that the first thing we need to cut out of the budget is incentives. These businesses saying, you give us this money, or you give us this tax break, or we're not coming, is extortion of the taxpayers, and we need to have a county commission that no longer cooperates with that. And, you know, we'll get into some other aspects of that on the way down here to the questions. But we need honest, transparent government that people can look at what they're doing and not have to have somebody explain it to them because they can see it and understand it for themselves. We don't need to be taxing people out of their homes. I am not a wealthy man. My house is paid for, but with the recent revaluations, something isn't done. I'm beginning to fear I may lose my home, and I don't want other people who don't have as much as I have to be in that same position. Thank you.
For that question I have, there are other economic factors contributing to higher cost of living in addition to higher property valuations and tax rates. Neither lowering taxes nor fewer services should be prioritized. We should look at the needs of the community and set the tax rate accordingly. We should look at a balanced approach. Adopt a tax rate that would be most beneficial to the people living here and will adequately fund service for us, the schools, that will not tax the community such that they cannot pay their taxes. That's what my answer was for that question. Thank you.
Of course, the hot topic for everybody right now are revaluations. You know, those notices have gone out within the last week, and people have seen significant increases in their property values. The thing that a lot of folks don't understand is that does not necessarily mean an increase in income or tax revenues for the county. That will depend completely on the current Board of Commissioners setting the tax rate. I think that you will see a significant decrease in the tax rate this year. Values have gone up significantly, and I think that the tax rate will go down significantly. That will be part of our budget process. I think, in contrast to what we may have heard, that our county budget is completely on line. I think it is as transparent as could possibly be, and you can drill down to a very low level on expenses in the county. As far as which I would prioritize, lower tax rate or fewer services, I think that there has to be a balance between those things. And that's the way that we go through the budget process. We look at the needs of the county, we look at the expenses, and then we look at the revenue that's being produced and try to determine how we can balance those things. When you talk about cutting services, in one of our recent conversations at our Board of Commissioners meeting, there was an indication, we need to cut the tax rate. And my question was, well, tell me what services you propose to cut in order to do that. The answer that I received, well, I didn't say anything about cutting anything, just want to reduce the rate. But when we reduce the tax rate, then we have to reduce some of the services. I think it's important for people to understand that a huge portion of our budget is not discretionary decisions. It is mandated services, that we are mandated by the state of North Carolina to provide school facilities. We're mandated to have a human services department, and we can go on down the list. As was mentioned earlier, public safety is a top priority. Education is something that we're required to provide to our young people in the community. Those are very important, and the economic development efforts and those incentives are what help us to get some of that revenue to pay those expenses. Got a lot more to say, but the clock is turning me off.
Many of you have received your new property valuations, and most have increased between 50 and 85%. I'm here to tell you that there is more than enough revenue coming in this county to continue existing services, tackle pressing school capital needs, and drop the tax rates substantially so all of us are not overburdened. Don't let anyone scare you into thinking this is not the case. Just a few weeks ago, two of the candidates up here were saying they couldn't drop the property tax rate, but now they are singing a different tune because of me and Larry Pittman and Chris Mismer, showing everyone that they were wrong. There was a surplus in '21, '22 to the tune of $9.6 million from property taxes and almost $7 million from sales tax revenue. Surplus is tied to real people who are struggling to buy groceries and pay rent and mortgage. All Cabarrus County leaders have known that there would be a need to build more schools. Instead of setting aside funds to meet near-term future needs, Steve Morris and his friends on the county commission have spent every dime of that surplus. A few weeks ago, he told the school board the only option to build schools would be to raise your taxes 10 cents. The thought that we must cut services is a scare tactic that is being used by my competitors to manipulate you into voting for them. You can't call yourself a conservative and then spend like an out-of-control liberal. If Larry and I had not brought the truth to light, they would still be trying to convince you that we have to keep the tax rate at 74 cents. Thank you.
All right. So to answer this question, I'm a believer in the theory that the government ought to be ran a little more like a business. And in a business sense, you can prioritize your employees over your customers or your customers over your employees, vice versa, and in both scenarios, you probably lose from a business standpoint. To look at this question, I think we're missing the fundamental factor here in that this is a question about diversifying and strengthening our tax base, as opposed to what are we going to prioritize one thing over another. A diversified and strengthened tax base is the only thing we can do to protect residents from having to pay more. To answer your question, how are we going to diversify and strengthen the tax base? Great question. Economic development through commercial businesses- Economic development through commercial businesses is absolutely the answer to that. And I think Mr. Pittman brought up a point that's worth mentioning. And I see where you're coming from. You know, if you can't understand in the budget that incentives is not a line item budget that we give out to companies, then I see how you say you couldn't find that because it's not in there. So we do have a Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation that does generate jobs and help bring jobs to Cabarrus County, right? And I love the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation, unlike a couple of my opponents on this stage, because it's one of the only government agencies that actually generates us investment in Cabarrus County. For example, over the past 25 years, we have spent $38.5 million in incentives to bring companies to Cabarrus County. We have netted back $252.8 million from those companies. That would not have happened without strong efforts from an economic development standpoint. And sure, you can say, okay, well, you know, residential tax base makes up for that. It absolutely does not make up for that. I'll give you an example. The Eli Lilly property, before Eli Lilly moved there, it was proposed for 1,400 residential homes to be put on the old Philip Morris property where Eli Lilly currently sits. If we would have allowed those 1,400 residential homes to come to that property, it would have taken them 16 years to make up the tax base that one commercial corporation is bringing to Cabarrus County. So for the people up here who are trying to scare you and thinking that these companies are robbing you of their money, they're not. They're getting reimbursed their own money. It's that company's own money they're getting reimbursed by. And in order to protect you, the residents, from paying more in taxes and having that burden fall on your backs, we have to continue bringing commercial investment. So to the folks on this stage who want to kill that commercial investment coming to this county, you're going to put that burden right on the back of the people in this room. So I'd like for everybody to consider from that standpoint, we have to keep bringing jobs to this county. We have to bring commercial investment to this county. The people are going to keep coming to this county whether we like it or not. Residential growth is inevitable in an area like Cabarrus County. It is. The only way to protect citizens is to bring in commercial investment. That way, we can keep a property tax low, which I am advocating for lower in the property tax rate, by the way, and keep services high in quality.
Well, I will start by saying, we knew all this was coming. We don't have to do reevaluations every four years. It's every eight years. But because of planning, and you need to listen carefully to these words because during politics, you're gonna hear phrases and catchphrases and all these things that people want to hear. But they're about to be worthless. Planning is important and you got to look into the future. And they say, well, we got a plan, 10-year plan, all this. Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna give you an example about WAC. Now, I listened to this gentleman the last time to come in and spent 30 minutes putting out supposedly factual information. None of it was factual. It was his facts, not the true facts. I'm gonna point a couple of them out. One, we're getting a 35 million gallon per day expansion. Only 22 million hours. 12 million's gonna be Mecklenburg County. We have no business treating somebody else's waste. They can treat their own. All right, well, it started all the way back with Pillotex. Well, we lost half our revenue. Well, that's a lie. They didn't lose half the revenue. Pillotex was not half the revenue of WAC. In fact, Cannon Mills had a lot of their own plants that processed the sewage, you know, because I worked for them when I was a teenager. So I know all that. So see, what it is, is they got plans. It's like the revaluation. Oh, they jumped it way up. They had no intentions of going there. I'll tell you that right now. Their intentions was to go up and then we'll cut it back where we really would like to have it. Okay? So you can't be fooled by all this stuff. It's in there. You just got to spend time to do your own research and quit listening to everybody's answers that they give you because answers is worthless. Solutions is what we got to have. So let me point out again, he said, most of our trouble with WAC was because of high rainfall. So I pulled up 10 years of rainfall. Only one year was different. The rest of them was exactly the same. Okay? So you see, that wasn't factual. But that's his answer and everybody takes it as that. So we're looking at the budget. You stop things unless you got a solution to fix what it's gonna affect. I'm telling you right now, it's gonna be disaster for a lot of people and it's gonna have a trickle down effect and it's gonna continue on hurting people. You got to, before you ever do anything. That's why they need to suspend this for a year or two and do nothing. Okay? You can't plan in two months, this kind of plan, in two months and come up with an answer. I can tell you that right now. You did, I want to borrow part of your brain. Because I'm telling you right now, there is no possible way you can do it. So just remember, solutions.
Great, thank you. So for our second question, we'll start with Mr. Morris and go clockwise. Mr. Morris, Cabarrus County's population will continue to grow and with it, the demand for housing, schools and infrastructure. Which will you prioritize? Building the infrastructure first to support the new influx of population or enduring the pressure of new population first to bring the tax revenue to pay for new infrastructure?
Thank you. That's a pretty involved question, but I think the quick answer is that we can't afford to put in the infrastructure for growth that we might think is coming down the road. Now, when you say infrastructure, that can mean a lot of different things. If you're talking about roads, Cabarrus County does not build roads. North Carolina Department of Transportation is responsible for our state roads and our municipalities are responsible for the roads that are built there. If you're talking about water and sewer capacity, that is WAC, as Mr. Helms just mentioned, that handles that. We have representation from the county as well as from our municipalities on that board. So they determine the future capacity. They also, I mean, that is a strong component of growth. If we were to extend water and sewer lines into the eastern part of the county, here in Mount Pleasant, without any control at all, then you would see rampant residential growth. Because that's what happens. When you have water and sewer available, you get that residential growth. As we heard earlier in some of the comments, as a rule, residential growth does not produce enough tax revenue to cover the services that they require. So I think that we have to look at a balanced approach to that. In some instances, if we went out and built the infrastructure and used the revenue from your tax dollars to pay for that, then we would be encouraging additional growth and much of that would be residential, which makes it more difficult for all the taxpayers in the county as far as the taxes they pay, as well the services they receive, the amount of congestion that they have to deal with and all the other issues attached to growth that you might be familiar with. So I think a balanced approach on that, just like most everything else that we do, is the best way to go. And we try to direct that growth as much as possible and certainly try to recruit as much industrial and commercial development to help balance our growth here in the county. Thank you.
Infrastructure is vital to Cabarrus County's growth, continuous growth. Without infrastructure, the county cannot build homes where there are, where there are no water lines to supply water to the homes. Without schools, you cannot accommodate the increased populations, nor you have the roads, nor do you have the roads to accommodate the increased traffic without having traffic issues. Infrastructure must be first. We need adequate infrastructure to support long-term growth in Cabarrus County. That is my answer.
Okay. I think first of all, we need to do a better job of maintaining what we have than we're doing now. And I know the county doesn't build roads. Understand that. But when I was in the state house, I developed a relationship with the district DOT people and do that again. And I got some things done that needed to be done. Had people out on George lines who were concerned about 50 mile an hour by their homes and their streets where they couldn't even get out of their home and out of their streets safely. I got that reduced to 45 so they have a little bit better time getting in and out of where they live. They needed a, well, they were gonna put a right turn lane on Mooresville Highway. And a fellow who lives right there, where the intersection would be, talked to me about, why don't we straighten out that intersection from Odell School Road to Mooresville Highway and put a traffic circle there? So I got ahold of DOT and had to get some money from Phil Berger and Tim Moore to do it, but got that traffic circle put there. And the fellow who got me to do that told me that in the two or three months prior to getting that traffic circle, they had, I think it was four or five fatal accidents right there. And he said, they haven't had one since we got the traffic circle put in. If you maintain relationships with the state who handles these things, you can get some of this stuff done as needed. But I think we may need to maintain what we have and address needs as they arise. And as I say, the growth that's causing us to have some of these needs, that's making more congested traffic and that sort of thing, could be reduced by getting rid of the incentives. One last thing, if I had, well, the thing's not running. I don't have much time I'm supposed to have. I'll try not to take all that now. I don't know if you remember Robert D. Rafer, who was on radio in Charlotte and he was a columnist. I read a column that he wrote, yes, it's been years ago. It's before I was in office, so it's been quite a while. But he wrote an article talking about how he was leaving Charlotte because of the mess that was happening there because of the way they were running Charlotte. And he had moved to Concord. And he said, they're doing the same thing here and I'm getting tired of it. He said, Mount Pleasant's looking better all the time. I don't know if he ever got a chance to move, but they're trying to make Concord and Cabarrus County into another Charlotte Mecklenburg and I'm against that. I think a lot of other people are. We gonna have growth, but we need to let it be naturally and not force it. And so that's what I'm for. Thank you.
Echo Mr. Morris. This is a difficult question. I don't like being reactive, no matter what I'm doing in life. I always like being proactive. Having said that, you can't build for what may come, for what may happen. Cabarrus County is a good place to live. That's why I live here. That's why we choose to live there. That's why other people are moving here. If you look back 20, 30 years at the western part of the county where I used to live before I retired, that area, I mean, it's exploded. And it's not hard to figure out why. Robert Rafer being one of them, got the migration out of Charlotte. I worked there, the streets for 26 years. I don't go to Charlotte unless I absolutely have to. There's a reason why I live here. There's a reason why I wish my daughters here. It's a great place to live. 40 years ago, one of my classmates is sitting in the back. I couldn't wait to get the hell out of Mount Pleasant. I was gonna go see the world, do things, right? Do great things. And I've been a few places, I've done a few things. But when it was all said and done, I came back here. Because as you get older and you get a little more wiser, I will say, you know, that's a pretty good place to live. And it is. We see Mount Pleasant growing. Okay, I own a small business here. I would be lying if I said that was not a good thing for my small business. Having said that, do I want to see Mount Pleasant turn into Harrisburg? Absolutely not. I want to ask for a show of hands, but I think all of you would agree the same way. I know there's big, I know there's new neighborhoods coming here. Some of that growth is inevitable. There's too much money in it. That's just the way it is. Being able to control that goat, being able to control that growth, it's a very delicate, it's a slippery slope. Because that growth's gonna happen to some degree. Because like I said, with the real estate developers and the property values and that migration out of Mecklenburg County. And let's face it, Mount Pleasant after Harrisburg is kind of the next stop on the train tracks. It is. I don't think it will get like Harrisburg because it's far enough away where people don't want to make that long commute. Or not enough people will to eventually move out of here. But the growth's gotta be, like I said, it's a slippery slope. You don't want to, you don't want to get caught not having the resources in place, the infrastructure in place. Having said that, you don't want to flood the infrastructure and then you're waiting five, 10 years for that growth to happen. Or you can make the argument, you don't want to encourage that growth that may not happen because the water, the sewer, the power lines are already in place. Thank you.
You got to have a vision. Bible's got a term, God's people perish without it. So if you got a vision, you got to plan for something. You can't have things without something. I'll tell you, I live in the county. And it takes me sometimes five minutes just to get out of my driveway and I'm out in a rural part of the county. You know why? Poor planning. Well, here's the reason behind all that, money. See, they're looking at the dollar. Oh, if we prove this, we get this. We prove that, we get this. And then all that money's already done planned out to be spent on something else rather than the infrastructure. So yes, you can have the infrastructure in place if you plan properly. I'm gonna tell you right now, I buy equipment. The equipment I have to buy is usually 50, 60, 70,000 dollars a piece. Well, that's, you know, that's costly when you go to either pay. I can't pay cash for it, so I have to buy it on time. And then you got high interest rates. So I got a plan for that. And I got to make sure that my planning includes enough jobs to be able to pay for it. Now, I can go out there and buy it. I got good credit, so I can buy it if I want to, but I don't have no job. So I got a plan for that. So sometimes I start off renting till I get the jobs built up and then I buy my own. You got to plan properly. So I want to tell you real quick, WAC was at 120 on each household in a bedroom, 120 gallons per day. You know what they had to do? Cut it down to, what was it, Steve, 45? Something forty something.
Seventy now.
Yeah. But it's down in the 40s. All right? So it's like the schools of the grade. You used to get an F when you went below 60. Well, you can go all the way down to 40 now. I'm sure for too long, it'd be down to 20. For long, they won't even grade you at all. You know, it'd be like everybody else. Let's just give them an award because they're here. So there's, it's just getting ridiculous, folks. We've got to start getting a hold of things and start planning ahead. And when we plan, we got to make sure that we're not overplanning or underplanning. And that's happening all the time. You see the results of it. So if you want to get things, you got to plan for it. But in the process, you got to remember, once you get it, you got to maintain it. You got to always look out. The state's gonna reduce funding. The federal's gonna reduce funding. It's got to be made up somewhere. So, you know, real quick, look at the school parking lot and some of the county parking lots at all the county vehicles. I'm gonna tell you right now, we could save quite a bit of money. You know, cars and trucks are pretty expensive. Start cutting some of those out. And I think we could start right there with savings right there. Thank you.
All right, I'm a big numbers guy. And to be honest with you, I don't think we're in the financial standing to even be able to ask that question, in all honesty. Right, probably about a month ago now, the school board in a joint meeting with the county board of commissioners asked for a billion, billion with a B, dollar bond to be able to fund deferred maintenance, the construction of new schools and the upfitting of existing schools. That's what our county school board asked for. So to be able to sit here and say, well, can we go ahead and build new facilities to plan for new growth? Well, I hate to tell you guys, but we're probably down in about a 20-foot hole already with being behind on our infrastructure. If we want to talk about residential growth, and I am a fundamental believer that the data shows us Cabarrus County is inevitable to keep growing. For example, there's 20 counties that are growing in the entire state of North Carolina. We have 100 counties. Out of those 20 counties that are growing, Cabarrus County is the fourth fastest growing county out of those 20 that are growing. The numbers, the evidence and the data point us to say that we will continue to grow from a residential standpoint. Additionally, from a residential standpoint, residential developments, these massive housing developments that you see going in, they are almost entirely and exclusively municipally driven. They are not driven by the county whatsoever. In the past several years, the county has not approved more than an eight-unit subdivision. All the residential growth you see coming into Cabarrus County is driven by municipalities like Concord, Kannapolis, et cetera, et cetera. That is not a county function to be able to put in these massive 100 or 1,000 unit housing developments. It's just not something the county does. People are going to continue to come to this county no matter what we do for the next several years. But we're in too deep of a financial hole with things like deferred maintenance from our school system to be able to go ahead and- our school system to be able to go ahead and pre-plan for growth coming in. So before we even go and ask ourselves this question, we need to ask the question, who are the two candidates on this stage that are best gonna be able to dig us out of some of these holes? I believe I'm one of those candidates with my business experience to be, to be able to bring investment to this community. I know I've harped on it this entire forum, I'll harp on it again. The only way to do that sustainably and as quickly as possible and as smartly as possible is through commercial investment like the county's doing right now. Thank you.
Two candidates up here are supported by a small group of wealthy developers and realtors who want to turn this county into the next Mecklenburg County. Have we not learned from the nightmare down 85? If they are put into office, we are certain to be one step closer to looking like Mecklenburg County and the suburbs of Atlanta. Overcrowding, traffic congestion, and crime will all spike within the next 10 years. Look no further than our sewer capacity problems. Wealthy business leaders don't care if infrastructure comes first or last. They only care about their profits. They gladly send checks up to the $5,000 range to candidates like Steve to sustain our out-of-control growth. That's documented. Take a close look at his campaign finance reports. His donors have no interest in what's best for the rest of the struggling under Bidenomics. They only care about the profits of the economic development corporations can bring to fuel their businesses. Steve is selling out our county and Jack is eagerly following right behind. I reject the premise that Cabarrus County elected officials can do nothing to slow growth. Our top legislative agenda items should be demanding general assembly, enact laws like other states to legally allow municipalities to use impact fees as a control on growth. My opponents will assure you that their tax incentives are keeping our tax rates low, but how is that working so far? Have you wondered who is paying for those ugly metal power poles going up and down Highway 80, uh, 29 in front of Eli Lilly to the tune of $13 million? The answer is we, the people. The taxpayers paid for them. Red Bull was given a tax incentive with a big fanfare to break ground, but years later, we see no jobs, just empty promises. Tax incentives are not helping the people. They are being used to help corrupt leaders stay in power and fill their pockets with personal growth. The growth in this county is being fueled by one thing, and that's greed.
All right, our final question. In any county's budget, there's always only so much money to go around, and it's never enough. Among competing needs, how do you prioritize schools, public safety, public services, and infrastructure? They cannot all be first. So we'll start with Ms. Nurse and go counter cock.
Okay. Well, they can't all be first. However, our county continues to grow, so will the revenue streams. Our public services are vital because it is the essence of how our communities thrive, flourish, and sustain itself. Public services such as infrastructure, housing, and social services are essential to maintaining Cabarrus County by providing safe roads and facilities, affordable housing, jobs, training, and information to the community. All of these are issues to consider for tax increase. More funding will come from sales tax. More fun, more homes, the more homes are being, the more homes that are being built will generate more tax revenue. Use of water lines will generate additional dollars. This is my answer.
Good. I think one, one statement that is absolutely true, there's, there's only so much money to go around. Uh, and that, that is the, the, the big question in every budget process that we go through. We have talked about mandated services, and those are the things that we're required to do, that we don't have any choice in. Then there, there are other things that, that may be important to our citizens, uh, that, that, that we do optionally. One of those is libraries. Another is senior centers. Another is parks. Uh, I'm very proud of the, the facility that's being constructed just to our right, right down the street here in Mount Pleasant, that's gonna provide all three of those things. The Virginia Foal Park and the Library Combination Senior Center that is, that is much needed in this area of the county. We're looking at how we can provide those services in other areas of the county. We can't do it fast enough because the funding is not available. But I think that we have to balance all those things. Nobody would argue that law enforcement and public safety is a number-one priority. Uh, when, when people talk about the county budget and they say, well, you know, uh, we're, we're suffering in an inflationary period right now, and we all know that. We know that it costs us more to do the same things every day. And so frequently I hear people say, well, you know, we're tightening our belt and the county needs to tighten its belt as well. And where we can do that, I think we do. Uh, the difference is, when the county tightens this belt, does that mean that we're going to eliminate, uh, one of our ambulances? Is, are we gonna cut back on our emergency medical services? Are we going to, uh, eliminate a sheriff's deputy? Uh, you know, would, those, those are the kind of impacts that we're talking about. So we hear people talk a lot about eliminating wasteful spending, but we don't hear a lot of examples of exactly what, what they think that is, or, or, or what, what we can cut that would, that would not, uh, damage services to our citizens. So it's, it's a fairly complicated issue. I think that the purpose of government is to do things for people that, that they cannot do for themselves individually. And that includes things like, uh, public safety, uh, and, and some of the things that I've, I've just talked about. Um, you know, we want to have as many freedoms as we've heard, as we can for our people. We've heard comments up here about, you know, telling people who they can sell their property to, uh, and telling them, uh, who can do business and those kind of things. So I, I do not support any of that, but, um, I appreciate everybody being here, and I don't think they give us a chance to, to wrap it up, but thank you.
There's plenty of revenues to provide these services and drop the tax rate. I've read the audits and reviewed the numbers. Don't let the candidates or the county staff scare you otherwise. This is just a manipulation on their part. Go back and look at the surplus sales tax and, sales tax and surplus lottery funds. We don't have a revenue problem in Cabarrus County, we have a spending problem. When elected officials line their pockets with donations connected to real estate and construction, they embrace growth and government spending to provide more personal wealth for themselves. Again, I encourage you to examine the campaign finance reports of the candidates that are here on stage and the reports of the PACs sending those ugly mailers, and you will see strong pro-growth correlations. Look at a website called cabarrus.vote and see for yourself. They have done all they can to try and convince you that they are here for your best interest and for the county, but they are here for their own self-interest and their bank accounts. Consider this. Commissioner Morris voted for a 20-year tax incentive to give the city of Kannapolis, and they, they turned around to personally benefit from a sweetheart deal he negotiated with city leaders to sell the gym theater and the assets to Kannapolis for nearly $1 million. As a part of his deal, he negotiated a salary twice the rate of a starting county school teacher to manage his one-screen movie house with a couple of employees. While the rest of us struggle to make ends meet, Steve is only interested in benefiting himself and his donors. I encourage you to do your own research. This is all public information found in the news about the pending SBI investigation and on his campaign finance reports at the Board of Elections. Thank you.
So to answer the actual question that was asked and not just dog another candidate on this stage, um, I think one of the important things that we have to look at prioritizing for my book is something like public safety. Take, for example, something like education. I believe everybody in the county benefits from education, but not everybody benefits firsthand from education. Somebody who moved from another state, who has no children, but moved to Cabarrus County, does not benefit firsthand from the educational system. Now, they probably benefit second or third hand, but everybody benefits firsthand from something like public safety. And additionally, things like transportation, maybe not everybody benefits firsthand from the KFC rider service, but somebody who relies on that to get them to their dialysis appointment absolutely, absolutely benefits firsthand from a service like that. So I think we have to look at it more on a micro scale to be able to say, are the people who are really benefiting 100% of the time getting the most benefit out of one of these services, things like public safety and transportation that I mentioned, are certainly high things on that list? To address a couple other things that have come up in this debate, because I'm not sure if we're gonna have time for closing statements or not, let me just say your idea about impact fees to developers is absolutely ridiculous. I talked to a developer the other day. If you want to talk about Steve's movie house and his couple of employees, well, let me give you another example. I talked to a general contractor the other day who has two employees, themselves included as one of those employees. They've already paid $15,000 in fees on one project. So to sit here and say that you're going to apply more fees and more taxes to our small businesses in the county is absolutely wrong and misplaced. If you're gonna talk about things like limited government, you should really drop the idea of something like charging impact fees because it doesn't work and it cripples small general contractors and small businesses in the community. Look, I'll be honest with you, I'm not a big fan of sitting up here and dogging other candidates and invoking other people by name, but I've been invoked by name once in this debate. So let me just say, guys, I do agree with you on one point. Do your research on the candidates. I think that's what's most important and why everybody's here today. I think what you'll find on this stage, there's two candidates, myself and Commissioner Morris, who are absolutely 100% for keeping this county open for business. And there's two candidates on this stage, Ms. Blackwell Lindsay and Ms. Pittman, who are going to inevitably have to bring more multi-hundred or thousand-unit hu- housing developments to this county in order to keep the infrastructure strain off of the county from what they've taken away from commercial investment. So if you're a big fan of massive housing developments, you probably know who to vote for on this stage. If you're a fan of being able to keep some of the tax money you have in your pocket, then I think you also know who to vote for on this stage. I'm one of those candidates who's gonna keep as much money in your pocket as I can, whether you're a resident, whether you're a small business owner, whether you are as wealthy as Donald Trump or as poor as a church mouse, I believe you're entitled to keep as much of your money that you can and that you have. And I'm one of the candidates on this stage that's gonna fight for you keeping as much of your money as you can.
So I'm gonna give you some specifics. I need three days to do that, but I'll try to condense it in this three minutes. We can start out by lowering some of these outrageous salaries. We can also do it by reducing assistance, 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 by the way. See, there's more, you know, I'm gonna tell you, I, I could not believe the amount of assistance that assistants, that other assistants have to do, and then somebody's gotta wind up doing the work. That's the one that got hired last, but the other four up the line ain't doing nothing. So, pardon my English, it's a little off. So I, I come out to 60 schools, so we're not, maybe it's up to date as others. But anyway, I think there is a whole lot of places we can cut with, that, let me give you another example. I'll tell you, man, it's just unreal when you start digging into this stuff. The school board is saying, we've got to build more schools, which, that's overinflated, by the way. The school cost is overinflated. I can tell you that right now. Way overinflated. I'd like to build one for half that. And I could get you a nice one on top of it, too. But anyway, they're saying, well, we got all these students coming in. Well, why are they asking the county to supplement them on the students that they're losing to all these charter schools and everything else? We gotta be supplemented for that money. So see, you, you gotta look through all these things, folks, because I'm telling you right now, they're saying this here, turn around and saying it that there, and it's not equaling out and adding up, okay? So what we gotta realize is, there is ways of fixing this. It's not gonna happen overnight, but it's gonna take people that's willing to not cater to groups, cater to this person, to that, it's to cater to you. You're the one being affected by it. Now, I live out there just like you do, and I'm being affected just like you are. And I don't like none of it. That's the reason I'm doing what I'm doing right now, looking into these things. We've got issues that's coming up that people have no idea. The solid waste industry, we're in trouble there. I'm gonna tell you, we're in trouble with WASAC. If we don't get that under control right now, we are gonna be in dear trouble one day. And I'm telling you, there's a lot to that. Cities should not override county ordinances. I don't know how we can change that. I'm gonna look into that, for sure. If we, they, they gonna have to decide, they're not gonna come up and say, well, we're gonna do something different and start restricting the heck out of people where they can't do anything in the city. We need to get rid of half our ordinances to start off with, just get rid of half of them. If you want to add a new one, get rid of 10 on top of that new one, okay? So that'll kind of put things back in the right perspective. And we start getting this thing a handle on it, then we can start helping everybody, not just this little group over here and that little group over there, and start looking over people, but looking at everybody that's involved.
Judge and I are members of the Lions Club right here. When I filed back in December, whatever, right before our Christmas party, he looked at me and he's like, Brent, do you realize what you got yourself into? Politics is a dirty business, and I'm finding that out in the last two months. Priorities in the county budget: public safety, number one, police, fire, medic. I'll buy anybody in here lunch at the Whataburger if you come down here and you convince me there's something more important than public safety. The parks, the schools, the Cabarrus Senior Center, whatever, you convince me of something that. You can't because there is nothing more important than that. I don't want to sound overly dramatic, but if your life or your family's life's ever in danger and you have to call 911, you better get on your knees and pray to God than somebody like me shows up. But that doesn't always happen. It didn't happen in Columbine in 99. It didn't happen in Parkland High School in 2018 when that school resource officer stood outside and did nothing. It didn't happen in Yvonne Elementary School, uh, two years ago, this officer stood in the hallway and did nothing. Law enforcement agents to be effective, it's gotta be properly trained, properly equipped, and properly led. And that will be, and always will be my, whether I'm in office or not, that will always be number one priority. Schools, schools are important. I, I'm a volunteer at the school. I'm around, I'm in, I'm in that environment, in that element. I see what goes on. The people in the high schools, the elementary schools, and the middle schools, they are, they are the boots on the ground. Teachers, administrators, the janitors, the counselors, those people are doing, God bless them, I wouldn't do it for that money. Those people are doing great work. Old Airport Road, I go by there every day, driving back and forth to the gym, the headquarters building. Week before last, I stopped out of curiosity and counted the cars in the employee parking. Not the maintenance building that's in the back, just the employee parking. There were 93 cars there at 2 o'clock on like a Monday afternoon. Okay? You can do the math on the salaries. Let's say all those people make 50 grand a year, I'm sure many of them, most of them make more than that, that's $4.6 million. Mr. Hounds talked about this. When you got the assistant to the assistant to the assistant, all this mid-level management, government is only growing government. Yeah, would I rather sit on, on, on Old Airport Road pushing pencils than, than a classroom dealing with students? Yeah, that's a lot easier. I dealt with it at CNPD, we had plenty of people that didn't want to work the street, but they wanted to, uh, they wanted all the benefits. You gotta prioritize those things. Get rid of some of the fat. We're not talking about getting rid of teachers, I know there's a teacher shortage. Get some of those people on Old, on Old Airport Road that have teacher certificates, get them out of, from pushing pencils, put them in damn classroom, put them to work. Some things in the county budget, if I had my way, would be cut, period. They would be cut, they would go away. Government cannot control them. President Reagan often said, government is not the solution to a problem, government is the problem. Government does not need, need to be involved in every aspect of our lives.
One thing which we seem to be in general agreement is public safety comes first. We have to keep our public safety officers, uh, well-provided for, well-trained, and able to do their job. We need to support them in doing it. But I'll say something nobody else has mentioned, and some of you may not like it. In addition to them being able to do their job, I always tell the sheriff's department and police officers, when I get to talk to them, you know, I'm armed everywhere I go except where it's prohibited, and when I'm armed, I'm your backup. We need to support people's right to keep and bear arms, and that doesn't come from the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment acknowledges it. It comes from God, you have the right to self-defense. We need to support that and know that sometimes a police officer or sheriff's deputy may need some help from an armed citizen. Okay? And, you know, I, I said on the House floor one time that the next to last thing I ever want to do is point my weapon at another human being and pull the trigger. But the last thing I ever want to do is let them hurt my wife or somebody in my family because I didn't do that. You have to have the ability and the right to do that. Okay? That will contribute to public safety. The other things, of course, that are mentioned here are also very important, um, but I say very important. But I say, better maintenance of school buildings should be emphasized to extend the life of the school buildings we have. And when they do have to be replaced, we don't need to replace them with more Taj Mahals. School buildings need to be functional, not art sea. They don't have to, you know, my grandfather built the school that I started school in. He built it in 1925. It was torn down, that part of it. They'd added to it, new buildings and all. But the old part was torn down in 1998. You wouldn't believe the people who wanted bricks from it as a memento from that. If the school, even that one, had been better maintained, it might have lasted even longer. And we need to take care of what we have before we go replacing it with something that's maybe functional, maybe just pleasing to some wealthy person's idea of what it ought to look like. And so doing these things is very important. We also need to look at public services. And what is really public service and what needs to be cut out that's being called public service, but it's just somebody's pet project? We need to do that. And the EDC was mentioned, and I'm going to say this, and I know some people won't like it. We need to cut off the EDC. That doesn't have any right to have any connection to government. If the Chamber of Commerce wants an EDC, let them run it, let them fund it. And if they want to give out incentives, let them pay for it, not the people.
I believe we have reached the end of the forum. We extend our thanks to Judge News for his careful moderation and our thanks to Lieutenant Gilmore as well. We send our thanks to the candidates for the excellent exposure that they have provided, what their thoughts regarding issues of the day. And lastly, we thank you for your contributions. Remember, would you please, please vote. We stand in charge.